... federal, local municipalities, EMS, fire departments. In fact, the Fire Marshal is texting me as we speak. I can feel him on my phone. But we have some questions that we have to answer first. And if, on our PowerPoint here Jed, why did we develop a safety audit to begin with? And we developed that so that we could meet certain aspects that were written into our crisis plan. Mr. Stewart will address that here in just a few minutes. And the second part there is to aid in the mitigation of risk. We need to constantly look at our assets. What do we have to protect, whether it's human, the human aspect, or property such as facilities? What kind of threats that we have? What must we protect it from? And then, we do that and we come up with our vulnerabilities. Where are our weaknesses in being prepared for a specific problem? Now, those problems, they can be man-made. They could be terrorist activities, whether it's domestic or foreign. Natural, you know, we've, we do have problems in Cabal County with flooding. In October, and then again, usually in March, we have problems with fire. It's when the woods get real dry. So, after we have developed this thing, or while we're in the process of developing here, how was this particular audit that we're about to go over, how was it developed? We combined information from a lot of different agencies. And I have those listed there, such as the Fire Marshal, the DOTs, or Department of Transportation, Department of Agriculture, local law enforcement municipalities, that Milton, Barbersville, HPD, the Fusion Center, the FBI, the Secret Service, the West Virginia State Police, the West Virginia Safe Schools Initiative, which we're privileged enough to have Rob Perry with us today, the Cabal-Wayne Local Emergency Planning Council, and the West Virginia Department of Education. So, the first thing I wanted to do is go over, in your pocket there, you'll see the Cabal County Schools Security Audit. And as Mr. Stewart and I, is it not in there?
I think it's under the blue divided.
Okay. Let you find it there.
Can you hold it up?
It's like a spreadsheet checklist. Got it, okay. All right, there are 22 areas in there that when Mr. Stewart and I go out to the different schools, these are the 22 categories that we're looking into. And as you look down through those, you can see that they deal with fire, with transportation, with food service, with security as far as doors being locked. That's outside doors and inside doors. Electrical rooms, are they free of clutter? To where, the way that the state law reads is it needs to be a three-foot clearance in between any of the, anything that's within that room, that, the ideal thing is not to have anything combustible in there. But if there is something, it needs to at least be three feet away from the, from an electrical panel. We also look at daily refrigeration logs. We make sure that those walk-in coolers and our deep freezes are being checked to make sure that there's nothing, that they don't go down and we don't know it. Emergency lights, we check those to make sure that those are all in working order. Something that I did fail to put on there, but we do check our extinguishers to make sure that those are all up and, and being checked regularly. Our visitors' management system is something else that secretaries and administrators need to make sure that they're doing whenever a person comes in. Mr. Hardesty and I get hits daily, usually, from somebody that has the same name as a sexual predator that's been registered somewhere else in the, in the, in the nation. We're working on the one-point entry areas. Those are your man-traps. You know, we are working at the, at Nichols, at Cabal Midland, at Huntington High. Most of the other schools, we either have already completed those or are in the process of planning those. Fencing, we need to make sure that we keep some in and some out. It all depends on how you look at it. We want to keep the good in and the bad out. There was one that we put on there that was brought forth simply because I saw something happen a few years ago. And it, it dealt with a lockable storage area. There was a kindergarten teacher that a child got in her purse, which shouldn't have been. It was innocent. It's a, you know, you're looking at a, at a five-year-old, gets in mom's purse all the time. And that teacher, he looked at that teacher as if she was his mother. So, you know, sometimes there are things in there that don't need to be broadcast out. Restrooms, are they stocked? Do they have soap? Are they in good working order? Are there any leaks? Every time a gallon of water goes through there, it costs the county just a tad bit more. But the main thing is, do we have water? Do we have soap? Do we have toilet paper? Do we have everything in there that improves the hygiene and knocks down on the flu or any other problems that we might have? But you can look at, at this right here. We have, we have done all of the schools in the county, and this is not something that you just walk into and in 15 minutes you walk back out. On average, probably the smaller schools take a couple hours. And then when you get to places like Cabal Midland and Huntington High, it's a half a day, at least.
Mr. Cooper, quick question.
Yes, sir.
When we look across this list, and I know it's a security audit, and you're looking at a lot of different things, how about first aid kits, bleed kits, I think we used that bleep, those types of things. Are you also checking that?
Yeah, we, we are checking. There's usually two spots that there's a first aid kit, and it's usually in the, in or around the office, and the other one is in the cafeteria. So, there, you know, where the cooks, you know, will cut a finger or scrape something, that's, that's usually where those first aid kits are. The AEDs and the Stop the Bleeds are in designated spots, and there are posters that are up throughout the buildings that say the A, where the AED is located, where the first aid kit is located, and where the Stop the Bleed is located. Next thing we have is, this was something that the state came up with, and this is what Mr. Perry back here will go through, and a series of questions, it's about three pages long, that will go, he goes through, and, and it's kind of like a checker checking a checker, that checks a checker. So, this is our third layer of checking to make sure that safety measures are being met and security measures are being met. So, I want to turn it over to Tim Stewart here for just a few minutes, so that he can show you some of the things that we're going through and doing right now. Tim?
Testing. Hello, Board members. Superintendent Sachs, Ms. Counselor Myers, she took off there. As Mr., what I wanted to go over is our, our crisis response plans. Whenever an incident occurs, the first thing that happens is that we will have a phone call, either from the police or from our school, letting us know that an incident has occurred. We have a two-pronged response. We have what goes on in our school level, and then we have what goes on at the county level. Schools are always going to do one of six actions, no matter, they're going to have to choose between a lockout, a lockdown, an evacuation, a barricade, shelter in place for weather, shelter in place for a chemical. All six of those response actions is what they practice each semester at each of our schools. What sets us apart a little bit differently than the other counties is, is what we do in addition as far as our county crisis response plan. But before I get into that, one of the things that, one of the things we, we're always trying to make it easier for our students and our staff to be able to do those six response plans, or action, response actions. So, one of the things that we're doing right now, which I'm very excited about, is we are putting in these NightLock security devices. Got Vanna here for me. As you can see, it's pretty easy to use. So far, they've installed them at Huntington High and Martha, or Davis Creek, and they're working at Martha right now. They have a deadline of May the 31st for completion. But anyway, so you'll have one of these boxes, it's located right beside the door. You simply get into the little plastique box, grab your piece of iron, line it up, drop it. So, in a matter of seconds, you officially barricaded yourself into your classroom. Takes 10,000 pounds of pressure to break that down. The door will bust before that will actually break. So, very excited about that. I think that that will make our students and staff much safer, because one of the things they've always questioned is when we come to barricades, we had people worried about if their door opens outwards or inwards, and we've always had concerns about that. So, I want to thank the, the county and the board for approving the purchases. Okay, so, so what happens to an incident, so I've got any questions about the NightLock devices?
And there is a mechanism for first responder, first responders to get that out of the way?
Yes. We would have actually had these a few years ago, but the state Fire Marshal's office, they had a memorandum out there that we could, you can only use devices that were able to be unlocked from the outside by a first responder. So, this summer, they actually, they first approved them. So, there's actually two devices, NightLock and, can't think of the other device, but yeah, there's a, there's a device that they, they supplies. We've got 54 of them, and we will give them to the first responders, and each of the schools will have them, so they can deactivate them from the outside of the doors.
They can deactivate that?
Yes. Yes, so. All right, so, back to the county crisis plan. So, we've got an incident occurs, the switchboard, or if it comes on our radio, they're going to automatically let Mr. Cooper know. He is our incident commander. And one of the things that, that changes, now, we, we've only activated our entire team twice, once for a fire at Cabal Midland, and then once for when we had the, the phone calls at Huntington High a few weeks ago. Only twice when we fully activated it. But we really use it all the time, we just usually use certain aspects of it. I mean, we'll have emergencies, the gas is out, the water's out, we have emergencies quite often, and we, and we use the incident command system, but just in those certain areas. So anyways, so the phone call comes in, Mr. Cooper has to make a decision. According to what the crisis or the emergency is, he's going to decide whether he wants to activate any of the following people. You have his assistant incident commander, which is Mr. Hardesty. You have the liaison officer, which is Mr. Sachs, with the backup of Ms. Watts. The liaison officer, they stay here, you, our crisis team is either going to go to the crisis site, or they're going to stay here at the board office and report to Mr. Sachs' conference room. The liaison officer is responsible for updates with like the state superintendent, government officials, that's going to be board members, you know, the, not the media, that would be Jed doing that, but people along those lines. You have the information officer. The information officer goes to the site, that would be Jed Flowers. He gives media updates, works along with the other information officers, does a great job. We always get super high grades for Jed. His backup is Debbie Smith, she reports to the EOC Center. We have an operations chief, that's Greg Webb. They're responsible for, so let's say we're, we actually have a, we always go to the worst case scenario, we have a school shooting, so we have the hills tied up up there. There could be a number of things that they need from us, whether it's maps, which they already have, maybe they want to know the location of, of electrical panel, anything about the, the building itself, they would need to go through the operations chief. Anything that goes with maintenance, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, Mr. Webb would be in charge of. His backup is Johnny Ryder. We have the logistics chief, they're responsible for basically any type of movement, whether it's through our trucks or through our buses. Maybe we need to ship material there, maybe we need to bring food there to the site, maybe we need to bring food to the reunification center. So, the logistics chief is responsible for any type of shipments, whether, like I said, whether it's goods or people. Mr. Millen's backup is Mr. Gleason. We have the planning chiefs. The planning chiefs are either Kristen Giles, Justin Boggs, or Heather Scarberry, and that's according to where the location of the incident is at. So, if the incident is at a grade school or an elementary school, Ms. Giles would be planning chief A, and vice versa. If it's at a middle school, Mr. Boggs would be planning chief A. High school, Ms. Scarberry would be planning chief A. They report to the site. They're there to assist the principal. More than likely, that principal's going to be, still be in that school, so they'll be there really pretty much assisting Mr. Cooper until the, until they actually have access to that school. But they will report to the school as well. They know that, they know the personnel there better than their coworkers from where they're assigned at. We have the planning chief B would stay back and report to the, Mr. Sachs' conference room, and we'll go over what they, their lines of responsibility, I have a sheet for them as well. And then last but not least, we've got the finance chief, Drew Rockin, in case we need him to write some checks for, give us some money for something. All right, the next sheet. So, like I said earlier, the operations chief Webb, you'd be in charge of all of maintenance activities, any type of response actions that we need to go through maintenance. Okay? Next slide. The logistics chief, once again, bus transportation, truck transportation, food services, they all fall under them. So, if we need to take food or water to either of our sites, then that, they would, they would contact Carol Hall, or for the bus, for students, Carol Hall, for trucks, Dave Washington, and for if you need food, Mr. Austin. The next sheet, we have a really good reunification plan. All, if we have a, a crisis at one of our sites, the reunification center is always going to be the high school that that school feeds into. So, if it's, and if it's at one of the high schools, it's going to be the other high school. At any of these worst, once again, I go to the worst-case scenario, school shooting, it's hours. It is hours before they start releasing people from that site, hours before they start releasing any of those students. It gives us plenty of time to release the students of the, the other high school, get them out of there. We leave the staff there. Mr. Tackett would show up there with his team and make sure that that staff is, is ready for when we actually do have the students there to show up with their, to be reunified with their parents. We also have a hospital reunification people, Mr. Atkins and Drew Rockin, they actually go to the hospitals to help check those students out. So, the hospitals, the hospitals really appreciate it. You know, we give them the information they need so they know who to, who they can actually assign people out to as well. And they also, through our communications, we can go back and forth so, once again, so we can account for everyone as well. Okay? Student services, Mr. Thomas, they would be responsible for, if we need counselors, psychologists, they would activate them and send them to the site. And then student records, one of the very first things that's going to happen when we find out that we've had a school shooting is, planning chief B is going to contact Jeremy Basen. Jeremy Basen is going to run records for attendance for that school, so we can identify who was actually there and who's not there. So, so early on, we can, we can find out who we need to actually identify. And last but not least, that's where we go, Mr. Thomas and the, who he would assign out there as far as the nurses, psychologists, and counselors. And that is it. That is our crisis response plan in a nutshell. Have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Stewart, just real quick.
Yes.
When you look at each one of the team members of the, of the crisis team itself, radio communication, how's the communication process actually work amongst the whole team? Because you've got folks at hospital, you've got folks at school.
Right.
You've got Dr. Cooper, you've got Dr. Sachs back here. What's the communication process? I know, I know.
We have these, it's, it's great, and it used to not be that way. I mean, we've, I've been here since 2005, we've had an incident command system since 2011, and we have always struggled, well, until a few years ago, we had always struggled on how we were going to actually communicate in case anything really happened, because we were always told by the police, one of the first things that's going to happen is the cell lines are going to go down. We all had cell phones, and the school had emergency cell phones, and, you know, we looked at other avenues. And one of the first, I always tell Mr. Cooper, the best thing he's ever done, one of the first things he did when he came here was he introduced these radios. And we have direct contact there, we can speak directly to the first responders, 911, the police departments, and obviously with each other. We can speak to anybody in the whole county, at any school, back and forth from the central office. So, that's how we communicate back and forth on these radios, on a certain channel.
So, for example, like Matt or Mr. Atkins goes to, you know, I guess he goes to Cabal Huntington. So, he has that radio, does Matt, does Mr. Atkins always carry the radio with him at all times?
Yes, we all have, everybody on our, that's assigned on our, our crisis response, and we're all assigned radios, and we're all required to wear them.
Got you, okay. Very good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Last part of this is the after-action report from Huntington High School. I do want to, want to read this. It says, "The information gathered in this after-action report is classified for official use only and should be handled as sensitive information not to be disclosed. This document should be safeguarded, handled, transmitted, and stored in accordance with appropriate security directives." So, this is really not something that needs to be discussed, but you do have a copy. I think Mr. Miller was, was at the Homeland Security meeting when this was gone over, so this will just be a remediation for you. But it has a lot of the different, well, it's, it's a, it's a complete after-action report of what went on. I will say that we had many, many strengths in this. The Homeland Security Group and the LEPC, or the Local Emergency Planning Committee, was very, very complimentary of how Cabal County schools conducted our business that day. So, but I will say, for about 15 minutes, the Lord and I were talking, right, he was in the chair right beside me. So, because it did, it, it was, it was very concerning, for about 15 or 20 minutes.
And one of the things I think that, that the report shows is that, that our response was appropriate and was well-prepared for.
Yes.
But I think it also highlighted the strengths of the relationships that we have with our partners.
Yes.
And how well, over those 15 or 20 minutes, and really beyond, all of our prior planning and desktop exercises, real-life exercises that we've done in the past, have played a role in us being prepared for a situation should it ever, should it ever arise, so.
I will say that within an hour, I had already spoken, in fact, the FBI, the special agents in charge for Southern West Virginia called me directly, as did the Deputy Secretary of Homeland Security. It's good, it's good to be on a first-name basis with these guys, because when, I mean, when it really comes down to it, it, it's good to have a good working relationship with these people. So, and I, I think that Cabal County has, I think we're in the forefront with it. Rob may tell me differently, but I think Cabal County's, I think we're, I think we're on the cutting edge. So, Rob, do you have anything that you would like to say?
I can attest to.
Come here, you got to get on this, we got somebody on.
I can attest to what Mr. Cooper is saying. I was there at that, the Cabal County meeting, and I can tell you that from the first responders to the hospital crews, to your all's people, everyone worked excellent with, with each other, and he's right, we do have a great working relationship with you all, and we're hoping to continue that. And I can also attest, I have six counties that I'm in charge of, and they are Mason, Putnam, Cabal, Wayne, Lincoln, and Boone. And probably the two top, well, not probably, the two top are Cabal and Putnam. You all are what I call the poster children for school security. So, I just wanted to mention that and tell you how well you're doing, and we appreciate it.
Aren't we a little bit better than Putnam, though?
I would, I would put you, I'd put you a little bit above Putnam.
All right, that's good, all right.
Yeah, I'd put you a little bit above Putnam. But no, now, everything that you all are doing works well with what we're doing and what we have a vision for. Like I said, I'm with Homeland Security, this Safe Schools Initiative, and the, the goal and vision that we have, you all are completely in line with what we're trying to do.
Yeah, good, thank you. Dr. Sachs, I'd say one thing, too, is that I think you're allowing the staff and Mr. Cooper and, and Mr. Stewart and Jed over here to anticipate in those Homeland Security meetings is invaluable.
I could, yeah.
I sat in one of them, it's just, again, part of the, the history I had before, and that relationship is just crucial, you know, with the, I mean, face-to-face, one-on-one, name-to-face is just really invaluable. So, I thank you for allowing the staff to participate in that, and it's just a, it's a great opportunity for them.
It's, it's a win-win.
Right.
And, you know, that, that relationship's opened up a lot of doors for us in order to make sure that we're well-prepared, so thank you for that.
It's also invaluable to know that I can call Rob at 2:00 in the morning, and he's going to answer.
Yep.
And he's not going to cuss me when I'm talking to you, so.
Mr. Cooper, I did have one, one quick question, too. On the audit checklist, I noticed that the Cabal County Sheriff's Department is not on it, it says on here, it says how it was developed on that first slide, was not listed on there, were they part of that?
It falls under the law enforcement agencies. I didn't name all of them.
Oh, well, okay, it said local law enforcement municipalities, that's what I'm just, okay, I got you. So, they were a part of the?
Yeah, they were a crucial part of it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
One question. One of the things that was mentioned there was single-point entry, and I know that we have or have processed the man-trap for all the schools. I know there has to be some points at the beginning and at the end of the day where multiple, there's not just one point of entry and exit that's open and available. Do we have, is there any kind of procedure or anything that schools, you know, are aware of in case of something that would come up at that time specifically? I'm thinking about, you know, when you go in, the schools that I'm familiar with, there are a couple of different ways that students enter the school, same thing at the end of the day, a couple of different ways they exit the school. Does that? ways they exit the school. Does that expose our schools at all? Or do we feel confident that with all the activity that's going on, that's necessary and that we, we're okay there in those situations?
Well, anytime that you open a door, you're, no matter when it is, there's a little bit of compromise in there. But it's also a necessity to be able to do that. You know, I'm thinking at, of one of the schools that they load some of the buses from the rear of the school. So there's usually a person that is responsible for that area during that to keep, because you're looking at egress, you're not looking at ingress. So, does that answer, does that help any?
I think so. I think so. And in particular, too, I've thought about the pre-K entrances and exits. They usually don't use, well, the ones that I'm familiar with don't use the main entrance and exit. And so it's, you know, maybe one or two staff members who, you know, have control of that door, and we have parents coming and going. And so, you know, it just, I, I, I mean, I think it, it could create a logistical nightmare trying to do it otherwise. But it's just always, you know, one of those things you think about, and like, hmm, I wonder if that's a concern or not.
Well, I think the other thing is, is that we, you know, obviously, at that time, you know, there are entrances, the main entrance usually is unlocked, so all the students can come in off of a bus or from a car pickup or what have you. But it's also where we have extra staff. You know, we have staff that are monitoring, they usually have a rate, they should, you always have a radio with them should something occur out there or something suspicious. And so, and usually those are consistent people. So they're used to who's coming and going. You know, is this person supposed to be on campus? Is this person not? This looks like a stranger that has no business being here today.
Yeah, seems out of place.
You know, and so there's that situational awareness that we also do training for with our administrators. And we incur, and of course, that, that flows through to when they have their own professional development. But we talk about situational awareness, being aware of your surroundings, being aware of things that look out of place, so that it can be appropriately reported during those, those small times that we have of, you know, opening school or closing school or what have you.
Yep. And can I pass on one more compliment? And this is to the staff, to Ms. Watson, Ms. Garberry, Mr. Cooper. Within the first month of being brought onto the board, elected into the board, I was at Campbell Hunting, or Campbell Midland, excuse me, and I was up there for an, an after-school event for my grandson. And front door, I didn't know which way to go. So I went to the front door, and it was locked. There was two students inside, I'll call it that airlock, in the, at Campbell Midland's main entrance. They would not open that door for me.
That's good.
And that's exactly right. I thought, how impressive was that? I did have my card key, I did go over and open it that way. But they would not, they just kind of stood there and looked at me. And I'm like, okay. But I, I opened the door, and I expressed appreciation to them because they didn't open the door. And I think that's the education of our students that we have with regards to the, you know, I'd say, security, safety was very ob-, or it was just obvious right there that those two young men knew, don't open that door because I'm not supposed to open the door. And that just left a tremendous impression, you know, that we have done, we're doing a good job, I think, of getting that across to our students. Probably, I know every student doesn't follow the rules, but it was very impressive. So compliments to everyone in doing that. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. All right, we'll move on. Is that all for the safety audits? Yes. We'll move on to bus driver training. Mr. Gleason.
Good afternoon, board members, and Superintendent Sacks, Ms. Myers. So you should have a handout, kind of a, give you, and I won't go through it painstakingly, although it is, it's quite a bit of paperwork, and there's a lot that goes into getting people from walking in the door to being road-ready to, to service our, our students in our schools as, as bus operators. We have, there are, to get a driver license fully certified, it takes a lot of hours of work and many documentation tasks. We work, they'll, they'll put in as many as 55 to 60 hours of training to, to prepare themselves to, to take on this task. And, which is appropriate with a, is a safety-sensitive task that it is. And we work with five entities throughout this journey. And that's the Campbell County Schools, of course, Service Personnel Office, Mountain State Educational Services Cooperative, after the RESSAs were no longer around, this is, this has kind of became the entity that kind of serves as training, provides trainers, and works with us to get people through the, the training and certification process. Of course, the West Virginia Department of Education Transportation Office, the DMV, and the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration. So, the first thing is, of course, we start out with the, the interview, the application process, I'm sorry. And we have two parts of that. The online application, that makes them an official applicant, just like everybody servicing professional, they do, go ahead and complete the online aspect. And then, we also have a, that you have in your packet there, I think it's five pages there of, of what we have for the paper application. It gives us a lot more, we think, insight to their background and thoughts on the role of a bus operator. So we, we think this gives more information to make a determination whether they might be a, a, a good potential trainee. And then we, so we, we ask them things about their experience working with children, their experience with operating large vehicles and machinery, you know, their interest in, in working in our department. And then we determine if we want to, again, move forward, we're going to bring them in for an interview. And let's get a feel for their, a little bit of their personality, their ability to communicate and build rapport with students, particularly at-risk students. I think that's very important. They're the first people that, that these students come into contact, they kind of set the tone for the day, and they, and then, you know, they bookend it, and then they wrap up the day with them. So it's important that they have that, hopefully, a, a positive beginning and end to their day through the work of our bus operators and, and staff. And so, we want to know a little bit more. Again, I always, I emphasize to my staff and staff development as well as to these potential trainees that, a big difference I see, and I've worked in all parts of the county, different areas, and I've worked in a lot of, both middle schools and high schools. And so what I see is the amount of trust they might have, give to adults. And those students who've come from pretty stable, secure backgrounds, they kind of automatically give that trust to adults. But you have students who have had, have had adults frankly disappoint them, people who should have done better by them. And they, it takes a little, you've got to invest some time and effort into building that rapport, because they almost have a natural distrust. And so, that's very important that we have people that are going to be able to work with students of various backgrounds. That's, that's critical. And then, we discuss the process that they have to go through. Let's see if I got my, hmm, is the thing not working? Okay. They discuss the training process and working as a substitute bus operator. So that, they want, we want to know, let them know that, how much of a commitment they have to make upfront. Because that's, right now, that way that's set up, that's uncompensated time, that 55 to 60 hours. So they, they're going to be, get the qualifications of a CDL, you know, with the passenger and school endorsement, but they will not, you know, until they start working before they really get, you know, to get compensated. So we want them to know about that. We also want to know that we can't guarantee a certain amount of work. Right now, I probably feel pretty confident that I could tell them, we'll, we'll be driving. We have one finishing up right now. Hopefully, he'll be test, he'll be, get a certification test before the week's out. And we'll probably have him driving on a regular route quite a bit, I mean, starting next week. So, we're, we're ready to get people on the road. And then, we, we do provide the perspective, a trainee with a CDL manual, so that they can point out which, you know, and we tell them about what things they need to especially concentrate on with that. So.
Well, I'm.
Okay. That's all right. Okay. The, and then, they have to get, then the next thing on page seven, you'll see where, well, the interview questions are on page six, kind of what I've been using. And I always kind of want to review and see, I'll probably work with some of my supervisors and trainers to see if they want to adjust that between now and the next school year. But the, they do have to apply or request training, and that goes to the Mountain State Office. So that, and they've signed off on all the things that will be checking on, motor vehicle record check. They'll get, of course, a DOT physical exam, and drug screen, breath alcohol, and of course, a criminal background check. And we send those on to the Mountain State. In fact, the person I work with is a, is a former Campbell County Schools Transportation Director, Patty Polly. She retired in 2014. But she, so we have a good relationship, and she's always available to, to help me through the process. It's a lot to, again, there's a lot to get somebody into the driver's seat. And then, you'll see there on four, we have, continuing on page eight, we have the, that is what's called Form 7, and that's a State Department, that gets the superintendent's signature. It's notarized that, again, it's saying that you're going to release this information, you're willing to release all your information about your driving record, criminal background, drug screen, all that information to the county. And then they have a two-page application that goes to the West Virginia Department of Ed, again, asking for their, a lot of their background information, their driving records. Sort of, some of this stuff's almost redundant, but, and if there's a, if they answer yes to these things, they have to provide explanation of what exactly the nature of it. It might be, some things might be on their record that were, you know, 20-some years old, maybe they were in their youthful indiscretion that we, since then, you know, we could, we sort of try to take things in context, that if it's something they've had exemplary record since then, you know, maybe something that we may be able to get beyond. But we definitely want to know all about their background and the state, and the, the various entities that are going to be involved in this process. Want to know that we have somebody who have solid character and responsible person. You can see there, the DOT physical, and that is an extensive questions. They have 32 questions about their various background. And if there's a yes there, they need to explain if they had a surgery, or they had, if they had a sleep apnea test and how that came out. They, you know, those are, some of the things that can sort of flag those with the, with the, the physical are issues like, like sleep apnea, diabetes, high blood pressure. Those are issues that can, can be, cause some concern that we have to get extra documentation, that they are safe to be behind the wheel with our students. And then, moving on into the, and then if you look on page 17, we got the application for the commercial driver's license. This goes, this is through the DMV. And what it is, once they, well, let me, yeah, once they, they've gotten, they'll be going through their 40 hours of classroom training, which I'll get to quickly on that here in a minute. The, but once they've done that, we go, once they feel like they're ready to take the test, we request their official driving records for the last five years. We also submit their DMV application, copy their physical, birth certificate, and driver's license to get a test card for their CDL learner's permit. They, they are, then, they will be involved in 40 hours of classroom training. And that is, 16 of those hours are online. If you go on page 19, those are the, those 16 hours are done through the online program, School Solutions Program. And the, what it is, the dr-, the supervisor, I'm sorry, the trainer will work with them, view the videos with them, and also engage them in discussion, any questions they might have about that material. He facilitates, or she facilitates that. And the, and then they'll have their classroom training of at least 24 hours. It's there on page 20, things such as special needs, an extensive review of policies, both state and county, particularly paying attention, obviously, to 4336, which is a, a policy that regulates school bus transportation procedures. And, for example, they do, they hear about this multiple times, and it's emphasized, of course, the K through three policy, that, that they have to have someone there to both send off students at the, at the beginning of the day, and to receive those students off the bus. And so, that's probably one of the great, you know, this is a great challenge, especially somebody that's new, new to a route or to be familiar with that. But they, they have to understand that that is important. We'd rather them take back, you know, half of a busload of students than, than to get somebody. We've had, of course, we, you know, we've had situations where that hasn't occurred, and we've had to address. But that, we, our, our staff does a really good job overall of making sure that everyone is in the right place. And if they're not, the idea is to take them back to school. They go over things like, end of it to our department, things like route sheets and how to read those, the use of seating charts, behavioral tools and referrals, that we have the letters that we sometimes will send to our, our parents, asking for their help. If, say, a child is getting out of their seat frequently, or can't keep their hands to themselves, or something like that, it's kind of what we call a dear mommy letter, the, asking for their, kind of be a partner with us to help address those issues. We talk about the substitute call-out system and how that works, weekly time sheets, and how overtime calculations are made, things like that, that they'll want to know that pertain to their, their compensation. We go over the procedural manual for our department, which we do every year in great depth. But we do this especially with our trainees. They have first aid and CPR training, either through district staff, or we, if we can't do, sometimes if we can't manage that, we do it through EMS. We, they send them down to the Training Center on 8th Avenue, and they're able to do that. They concentrate on CDL prep from the manual with the, they go over that extensively with the supervisor. They do hands-on pre-trip training. In our pre-trip, there is about 300 items that they have to go through on a pre-trip, that they have to know to look for, to look for defects, any signs of they might, you know, of any kind of leakage, any kind of thing that might be of a safety concern, that they would need to refer to, to the mechanic, and maybe get a spare bus in that situation. They look at safety procedures, such as chain installation, fire extinguisher training, use of the mirror grid to make sure that their mirrors are in the positions that they're supposed to be, so that they can see, maximize their sightlines and so forth. They have to pass the written test of DMV to get their, of course, their CDL learner's permit. There are four parts to that. And they, that will give them their, that sets them up to begin to go through the actual behind-the-wheel process. They also have to complete the entry-level driver training as required by the federal motor carriers. They have different components of that. Some of this is more geared toward, to be honest, toward like over-the-road truckers. But it's something they put in effect in February of 2022. But some of the things like threats to CDL drivers certainly qualify, the kind of the see-something, say-something type of training that they will get. They'll complete their drug and alcohol screening, of course, with negative results. I put my own examples in there just to, so everybody knows that I'm in good shape. Anyway, I go in and put my papers in there. Behind the, then they get behind the wheel, minimum of 12 hours, at least two hours of that will be night driving. They drive a conventional bus, which, those are the ones for, I guess, the lady person would be with the, the hood out in front, that looks more like a, kind of designed like a regular, like a truck or something. And they do eight or nine hours in preparation for their CDL driving test. And then they have to pass the on-road skills exam with the, with the DMV examiner, which will emphasize the pre-trip process and certain skills, such as straight-line backing, alley docking, parallel parking. They'll go out driving on the road with that examiner and have to execute a railroad crossing, making, making turns without encroaching in the lanes of other vehicles or curbing the bus. Those are things that can be automatic failures. And then when they've, when they pass this, they go to their transit bus training, which is three to four hours of that time in preparation for their driver certification test, when they have. they have, and then they go to the, they'll get the examiner in, typically, it's a supervisor from another county, and they come in to provide them the physical performance test, and there are six components of that, that's things like, this, they want to make sure that you're able to help assist students in case of an emergency, so for example, you have to start from the driver's seat with your seatbelt buckled, and exit the emergency exit in the back within twenty seconds, get yourself out, get yourself down, you have to get, kind of get on your bottom, and then drop yourself out of the back end of the bus, so you'd be ready to help the students evacuate as well, and then installing a tire chain within ten-minute time limit, climate and sending the bus steps three times in thirty seconds, move your foot from throttle to brake in ten times in ten seconds, repeatedly depress the brake pedal all the way to the floor, and hold it for three seconds, five times in a row, and make sure that you could be able to get out of a roof hatch, you basically have to just drop a roof hatch over yourself, and make sure, that's just a, you know, minimum that you would not be, you, if the bus turned over, you'd be able to get yourself out and help the other passengers get out as well. They do the behind-the-wheel exam, general driving skills, and then loading passenger simulation, and unloading simulation on the lot, it's as if you were, they're crossing the road, and how that procedure would go, and then a railroad crossing on the lot, and then you do, again, you go out on the road a little bit with the, with the examiner as well. And so, kind of rushed through it, but that, that gets you ready to go, to be a fully certified Western Union bus driver, if you passed all that, and you go out on a minimum of two routes with a, an experienced driver, and after, and you're driving, and then you are ready to accept and perform assignments for Campbell County Schools.
That is such an important job, and as you stated early on, you know, it's the first person that some students see to start their day, and the last person associated with our schools at the end of their day, and that is a significant amount of training, but absolutely necessary to make sure we have very qualified drivers transporting our students, so, thank you for that update.
What's the, on average, on typical, from application to on the road, how long does it actually, what's the timeline or timeframe it actually takes?
If they, because, well, they work with our, our trainers, and we're, we're lucky enough to have, we do have three in the county, they are, well, two of them are drivers, and then one recently became a supervisor, so works in our office, but they work with, they can get them probably about six weeks, because usually people either have other jobs or other, they have to kind of work around everybody's schedule, that's one of the questions I ask, is what their schedule looks like, are they available Monday through Friday during the day, is it more evenings and weekends, and they'll, all three of the, our supervisors are good about trying to work, they get a group of maybe three or four in a class, and they try to, you know, work with, kind of feeling out some common ground of when that'll work, okay, seven o'clock on, on Tuesday's work for everybody, let's do that, and then maybe, oh, eight o'clock in the morning on Saturday's work, that type of thing.
Okay, so about six weeks from somewhere?
Yeah, if they get, and they, that's them being consistently showing up, and following through with their part, they can probably be done within about six weeks.
I've had meetings with, well, been in meetings with like TTA, and they're having fits trying to find drivers, and I'm assuming county-wise, we're having the exact same problems trying to find folks to come in and drive, okay.
Yeah, I think that's a nation, national.
But what are we doing to recruit, just curious, Dan?
I think one of the things, well, we have been, I mean, most, biggest thing probably for us is word of mouth by our own drivers, they, they often, people come in, because they've talked to one of our drivers, it's a pretty good gig, and a lot of our drivers, either they'll drive a lot for us on all of our extended trips, and to make extra money, and, and our co-curricular and extracurricular trips, or they, some of them, it frees them up, they, you know, they do other things in that, at interim, in between the morning shift, and they may be HVAC people, or roofers, or we've got barbers, we've got a little bit of everything, and so that's attractive to some people as well. But I think we do need, I want to probably get together with Jed, and figure out some sort of campaign to, to get some more people in the door, you know, we'd like to, we wish we could have, there's just a lot of obstacles to a thing like having full-time substitutes, because that's the hardest thing, is you're telling people, well, we may, and, because at some point, if we get enough drivers, it may be, we only give you two or three days of work, of work instead of four or five every week, that's, that's hard, and benefits are things that people want, you know, right away, so that's, those are challenges, and that we, we can navigate through, and there's a lot of laws on the books, and things about, you know, service personnel, and what you can do, you know, offer, and what you can't.
And I understand that the bulk of their training is unpaid, they don't get paid until they actually?
Right, until they actually start driving for us.
Okay. Yeah, it's, you see it all over the place, if you're traveling, driving the roads, signs for county school systems, bus drivers, I mean, you just can't find them.
Yeah, I think we need to, like I said, we do need to get out and do some more promoting, I mean, I know, you know, I haven't seen the, I don't know where they are around the office, but we know, we used to have some yard signs that we even had, like, put out in some schools, so maybe that could even be another thing, I remember, I remember that being something they have used in the past, and, everything from high-tech to low-tech, and everyone's.
You've all done things like where you set up the pumpkin festival, you've, you know, they have a booth at the pumpkin festival where they're attracting drivers, we've had service personnel hiring events, where we actually let people come out and drive a bus, so we've done that in the past, too, so we've done some creative things.
Yeah, we have, yeah, we're always there, meaning the...
It's the consistent application of it, and that's, that's the thing that we strive to do, and, and every year, we're doing something kind of special around what we're trying to do to recruit, and so.
All right.
We definitely try to bring our A-game.
Yeah.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, we'll move right along to two-point-oh-three, the current excess levy overview, Mr. Rockin.
Good evening, gentlemen, and good evening, Mrs. Smalley, I think she's online with us, so good evening, Mrs. Smalley, if you can hear me.
Yes, sir.
All right, good to hear you. Okay, this evening, and I'm going to try to be brief, there's, there's only five pages in the handout, gentlemen, probably the easiest thing, if you're having any trouble finding, go to the back, we're, I'm the last section. We'll just kind of show you, you know, what, what we do have in our excess levy, our excess levy was approved back in May of twenty-eighteen, and it was for the five-year period of FY-21, since the twenty-twenty slash twenty-twenty-one school year, and then the four years after that, so we're actually currently in year number three of the levy, two more years to go, and probably, maybe come summertime, or thereabout, we'll, as a board, we'll start looking towards the next excess levy. But tonight, we're just kind of reviewing what's in the current one, talk a little bit about some of the provisions in there, and it is timely, tomorrow night, you all will have a special board meeting right at the beginning of our time together, to approve levy rates for next year, and one of those rates that we approve every year, and it's set according to the levy call that we're going to look at, but that is, that's, that's one of the levies that we kind of re-approve every year, is based on what the voters approved back in twenty-eighteen. So the first page we have, first two pages, they go together, this is the ballot, and there's a, there's a much larger, thicker document, but I, you know, just for simplicity, this is what the voters would have seen in May of twenty-eighteen, we, we ran it alongside of the primary in twenty-eighteen, and so there are several provisions, you can see on page one, and then halfway through the top of page two, different things that the excess levy funds, that it pays for, and that's salaries and benefits, or several items on there, they make up several of the lines, and you can see, at that time, we had provided an estimate of what that local cost would be to be able to sustain those items, so based on, so at that, whenever this was put together back in probably mid-two thousand seventeen, late-two thousand seventeen, these were estimates of what the cost was locally to be able to provide salaries where they were at that time, and if you go on down, you see there's a line for textbooks, and, and other things, and so we had, those were estimated costs for that time. When you, if we go to page two, you can see right about halfway down the page, there is a total, and at that time, there was, based on property values, twenty-four million one-hundred-twenty-eight thousand one-hundred-forty-nine dollars is what the projections were that the, the excess levy would raise, to be able to pay for all of these things that we had identified in the levy as being necessary.
Rogers, real quick, this is, this is over the life of the, of the?
That's annually.
That's, this is annually?
Annually, yeah, yeah, so these numbers, these were the estimates, like I said, they would have been, would have been calculated, probably in late-two thousand seventeen, it would have been before the, the May-two thousand eighteen primary, that's on an annual basis.
As I recall, I started in July of two thousand seventeen, Drew, I think, started maybe a month before that, and one of our first items of business is new superintendent, new treasures, oh, by the way, there's this excess levy that's coming due, and we really need to be thinking about this, and so, this was our, we cut our teeth on this one, I believe.
We, we did, there was, you know, it was, it was a big project to really start off with, and you, you're correct, you and I came on board right about the same time, and this was our big project in the fall, amongst trying to get acclimated to our new positions, was how important this is, and you can see that, you know, at that time, the estimate was about twenty-four million every year, so if, if the project had not been successful, that we would have a very, very different financial situation today.
Drew, Drew, I didn't ask you this question when we were planning for this, but what percentage, I mean, I would estimate this was, this is probably at least a, close to a quarter of our general revenue that we have for the year, is that, is that a fair statement, maybe, maybe a fifth?
It's probably a little less than a fifth for the general fund.
But it's very significant.
It's very significant, state aid is, is the biggest part, but so many of the things that we get to do in Campbell County, it's because of this excess levy, there are counties, not very many, but there are counties that don't have an excess levy, and they have many, many challenges to be able to operate, and thankfully, our, our county voters have, and our taxpayers have been very good to the school district, and have for many, many years, I think since sometime in the nineteen-fifties, every year, what, do you have a? Nineteen-fifty, Jed says, I knew, somewhere in the fifties, so nineteen-fifty, so every, every five years, the voters have said, yeah, we want to keep supporting education in Campbell County, so we're very blessed. So what I did want to show you is, is about halfway down the page, on, on page two, is I highlighted, you see, there's, there's a paragraph here, there's a lot to try to unpack, so I just, I kind of broke it up a little bit with highlights, so you can kind of get the gist, and basically, what it says is that if the county property values increase, or if the sheriff's department, they, they are our tax collector in the county, if they would be successful in collecting more than that twenty-four million, and usually, we, we do see them collect a little bit higher than that, you know, because of allowances, they, they usually do pretty well collecting taxes, and our property values have grown since two thousand seventeen to where we are today, so we are in a situation where we actually collect a decent amount more than that twenty-four million. So when we're in that situation, this clause that's in yellow indicates that the school district has some discretion on what you are able to use those excess levy funds for, above the twenty-four million. Now, there is the expectation that those dollar amounts on page one and page two, those are locked in, when we have a, a line item for equipment, for instance, this is at the top of page two, it says, "Equipment and Rentals, one million six ninety-one nine thirty-seven," there is an expectation here that that money must be spent for what is outlined in that box, it does say including, but not limited to, but, you know, some, some discretion is there, but basically, whatever, you know, the concept of some kind of equipment, or the use of, of equipment, that money must be used for that purpose. Now, if, if we do collect more than the twenty-four million, it would be appropriate, and the language here in, in the box, we're highlighted in yellow, it does indicate that you would not have to proportionally spend that surplus money amongst all of those provisions, basically, the school board would have the authority to allocate the surplus, however it chooses.
As long as it's within these categories, let's say, I mean, you could, you could distribute the funds, excess funds among these particular categories, or?
I, I think you'll see that if, if you really study these, they're open enough that just about every expenditure a school board has, somewhere is going to fit in here, but if you look at where it says down at the bottom, it says, "For the enrichment, supplementation, operation, and improvement of educational services and/or facilities," that's about as broad as it gets.
Pretty broad.
You, you could do just about whatever you need to do, that's a legal expenditure that benefits the school system. So what I also provided for you, so if you understand that part, page three, it's small print, so I also gave you page four, which is more of a condensed, blown-up version, but page three comes from our audit report, and it's, it's one of the reports I have to do at the year-end, in August and September, and I have to be able to show that we're spending the excess levy funds the way the voters intended, so that's what this sheet accomplishes, and like I said, I know the numbers are small, the font is small, so if you would like to turn to page four with me, you'll see it a little bit larger, but it's substantially the same information. On the left-hand side, it's got all of those same provisions that you saw on pages one and two, and that first column that has dollar amounts, the top says, "Current Year Estimated Per Levy Call," that's those same dollar amounts, okay? So if you look down at the bottom, there's that twenty-four million again, the, the next column over, it says, "Estimated Levy to Date," and because this report is as of last June, last June was the second year of the current levy, basically, that, that second column is just the first column times two, okay? So if you look at the bottom, instead of seeing twenty-four, you see forty-eight. Okay, the next column, so we're not the last column, but the one just to the left of the last column, this is actual, so these are the fifty-seven million up at the top, is what we've actually collected in the first two years of the levies, so you can see, that's quite a bit more than the forty-eight that we were projected to collect, okay? And there is a variance over there on the far right-hand side, it's nine and a half million dollars more than what was projected, so there's been quite a bit of additional money come in. The actual column, if you go down through there, these are, besides that top line, those are expenditures, actual expenditures, that have been paid from levy funds, and so if you go down through, you can see, like, that first one, we've spent eighteen-point-nine million dollars out of levy, you know, for professional salaries, okay? If you go on down, I mentioned equipment, equipment's towards the bottom of the page, we've spent two-point-nine, so we actually are a little under budget, so we have a little bit of money that will probably need to be used for equipment and rentals before the end of the levy cycle.
So, Mr. Rockin, so basically then, what you're, when you look at it from legality standpoint, is not necessarily annually, as far as meeting that, but it's at the end of the cycle?
Yeah.
For example, if you had the seven billion dollars up here that we have under professional salaries, use that as an example, at the end of the cycle, it'd be, when you say it's a four-year, five-year, I can't remember what's, anyway, four-year cycle, is that right?
Five-year, five-year.
Approximately thirty-five million dollars, so you could be... Approximately $35 million. So you could be six, six, and then as long as that, at the end of that cycle, it exceeds the $35 million, then you've met the requirements of the bond itself.
Right. And, and one thing we do, and so you saw on the equipment, you can, you see brackets, so that's, that's a negative number. Because we haven't spent the full amount that we should, whenever we worked on financial statements last fall, we did reserve that money off to the side. So that way it does eventually get spent.
Erm, earmarked for that, too.
Yes, because that, that's the appropriate thing to do. Our voters gave us money for that, so we must spend it that way. So that money is kind of, i- it's earmarked, like you said, it's, it's, can't be spent on something else other than equipment and rentals.
And, and I think, I want to also, that's also, when we go into budgeting, we also look at this as we think of how we drive our budget. So things like vehicles, you know, certain, we have, we have to actually purchase a certain amount of vehicles per the levy call to keep our, our fleet fresh and, and up to date. But a lot of times it's, you know, well, should, should we bring this vehicle here? Should we do this? Do we need a dump truck or do we not, you know? And this excludes buses, by the way, now that I'm looking at Dan there. Excludes buses, but this is like maintenance vehicles, you know, service vehicles. And so again, you can see that over the life of the, of the levy, we have a little bit more money to spend out of that in order to make that whole. So just, I just wanted to explain that sometimes there's things on there because it's what we've actually committed ourselves to, to the voters also.
But, but again, I mean, it's, you have time.
Correct.
Two and a half.
Right, exactly. Exactly. Right. So I, I think we anticipate, you know, there's a couple that have brackets, actually, there's three of them that have brackets. I think we do anticipate the end of the five-year cycle, those are going to be gone, but.
But just because there's a deficit now.
Right.
Doesn't mean that they can't grow.
Right.
Cause we still have obviously three years, this year being one. So that vehicle, the, the one under, um, uh, equipment and rentals, for example, you know, we need to be cognizant of the fact that there is a little bit of a deficit, so we may need to up what we're, what we're doing in order to, to meet the, the requirements of that line item. But because there's a, there's an allocation for next year too, that we have to meet, so.
What do you do with personal taxes and benefits?
Well, part of that, part of it is actually because I believe our, our dental and optical plan experienced maybe a little better than expected experience. We're, we're self-funded. So we don't pay an insurance company. We, we do have a third party that takes care of the administration of, you know, should we process this claim, deny this claim? We have, we have a, an independent third party that handles that. But because you still kind of had some of the after effects early on in this from COVID, and, you know, places not, if everyone was going maybe as faithfully as maybe they were pre-COVID. I, I do think that's a little bit of it. I think that's something we'll need to watch.
How do you, how would, I mean, if you ended up, if you're supposed to hit the numbers that you have in there, how do you take benefits and, you know what I'm saying, and make up that delta? Or what?
Right. Uh, well, I think it's something we would need to watch and then see what options we would have. But I, I think, I think really what it was, is this was based, again, we based it on estimates several years ago. I think our dental and optical's actually been a little bit less costly than we anticipated. And then also our workers' comp premiums have also been coming down steadily. And so really both of those things, I think it's really more cost savings than anything else, which is good. But it is, it is causing a little bit of a glut of, of some funds that we had originally intended, or were expected to spend. So, you know, if you look at that, you kind of understand, you know, where we are with different precision, different provisions in the levy. And you do see, I highlighted a couple of them. And we did kind of touch on this topic maybe a month or two ago. And that deals with the library and the parks. Both of them have a provision in our current excess levy. And if you look at it, that first column, again, that refers back to what the voters approved back in May of 2018. The public library is $1,471,869. And for the Greater Huntington Park and Rex District, it was $455,229. So kind of following what we talked about a minute ago, if you multiply by two, over that two-year period, it should be about 2.9 and, and 910,000. And you can see what we actually paid out to those two entities over that two-year span. And so the difference is we actually funded out of surplus the public library by about $582,000, and the park board by $181,000. And again, that's not in a one-year span, that was a two-year span. But you can kind of do the math and, and estimate about, you know, what that is on an annual basis. Getting close to $300,000 a year for the library, $90,000 or so per year to the park board. So what I also have, and this is the last page of your packet, since it is time to be looking at levy rates for next year, our, our levy rates, and there's, there's a lot on here, so I apologize for the busyness. But if you look at the first column, that's, that's kind of like a gray title, you'll see where it says, "Class one rates 22.95." You see that? Okay, so that's the overall excess levy. And so, and, you know, we just double the rate and then double it again, and so you can see all the numbers where we've got our property values tied in. So if you go all the way down to the bottom and count up three rows, it says, "Net amount to be raised for 2024." So that's next year. And based on our property values that the assessor sent us, we could expect for our whole levy to bring in about $29.25 million. Remember, we were starting at 24-something. So we're quite a bit, it's quite a bit of surplus that has grown. Yeah, you see it? Okay, we're good. Okay, so you can see it, it's grown quite a bit. Our property values have grown quite a bit since 2017. And in fact, for this upcoming year alone, the increase, that's down there, that last line in that first column, it's almost $2.3 million. We do believe a lot of that is inflation-related, inflated property values, houses have greatly appreciated recently, cars have appreciated. But that's, that's where we're looking at. So in the past, there's, there's been, you know, based on the amount in the levy, both the library board and the park board get a portion of our levy call. Now, as I explained at the beginning, there, there's a floor here that they are guaranteed. As long as our, our property values don't tank, they're guaranteed the amounts in the levy call, which for the park board was again, $1,471. Or there's a library for the park board, $455,000. For this year, the estimate for the library board was $1,644. For next year, based on if nothing changes, the library board's looking at $1,784 for next year. And the park board is $551. The difference, just also to, to show you, to demonstrate that, the difference between the, the amount on this schedule and the floor for the library board is about $312,000. And for the park board, it's almost $97,000. We typically do receive more than what's on that schedule, because I mentioned earlier on, the sheriff usually does a pretty good job collecting the taxes. And so it's, it's common that we collect maybe as much as an extra quarter of a million dollars that would, under pass precedence, would be, would also be sent on. So with what you're looking at right here, the amount from the amounts on the levy call to what could potentially be going out the door next school year, it's about $659,000.
So I asked Drew to just have a general overview of the current excess levy, so you all sort of knew the inner workings, really the, you know, big picture look at what, how it currently exists. Then of course, you know, we're thinking about how to plan our budget for next year. And as we think about how Drew and I continue to work on the budget that we hope to bring you, the current plan is to bring you all the, the sort of the budget for an overview on May 15th, which is a workshop. And then the next day is, is the board meeting, we actually ask you to approve that. Now, we've traditionally done that, I think, the last six years, we've always had the workshop and then the, the board meeting the following day. However, if that's something that you all would like to have a little more time as we provide you an overview, we may want to look at rescheduling the workshop to an earlier time. And so I'll talk, I'll talk with you and Board President Smalley and see if, excuse me, if you all want to continue with what we've currently done and you're comfortable with that, or should you want to back up a little bit? But throughout the process, as Drew and I continue to work on it, I'm going to keep each of you all informed as to how the, how the budget draft is going. And to make sure I get any thoughts or concerns from you all, so that we can make sure that we bring the best budget to you possible as we think about how we're strategically prioritizing the budget for our needs for, for next school year. So. But again, we just wanted to be able to provide this, this, some food for thought, and it may be a conversation starter also. But I'll keep you all informed as Drew and I continue to evolve the budget. And then of course, if there's an interest in moving that May 15th date, then we can also look at that too.
Mr. Rockin?
Yes, sir.
I can do the math, but you know, you can probably just answer it. So our total levy amount for the year, both the, the library and the park board get a certain number, and it's a certain percentage, I'm guessing, of that total. Is that correct? And, and do we apply that same percentage to the excess that we bring in in order to determine what we provide them?
That's the past practice. So I, I think the, the information, the things the board will need to consider is you have some flexibility, you can determine what you want that to be. There, you know, there is a floor, but past practice is that it's, it's proportional, every, every penny is proportional.
All right.
It's like I say, this is very helpful. This overview is very, very helpful. It clears up a lot of the fog that's in my head, you know, as I'm looking at it, because I didn't have a good total understanding of it. But this is very good, prepared for tomorrow's meeting. So thank you very much for putting it together.
Thank you, sir.
And just from my point of view, so you already know my point of view, I would like more than a day to, to look at that. So we can figure that out.
Yep.
Okay, anything else on the levy overview, Mr. Rockin?
Unless there's any other questions, that's, that's all that I have.
All right, thank you so much. All right, do we have any delegations? No delegations to be heard. Takes us down to 3.01, board member comments. Any comment from the board members?
I kind of said it unofficially, but officially liked again, just pass on from Huntington High to the board, their appreciation for the support for the, the new baseball field. They wanted to definitely pass that along, when you pass that along to everyone. And again, so I just like to say, it was, it was a great time. It was cold, but it was a great time. So anyway. It wasn't, it wasn't that bad, it was just cold. Yeah. So anyway, that's all I have.
Any workshop requests or anything? 3.02. All right, takes it down to 9.01, adjournment. Need a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Second!
Second, all in favor? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. We are adjourned. Oh.